Welcome to the Crestview City Council Workshop for the 24th of July. And I call this meeting to order, and at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Blocker to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You stand with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own.
Thank you. Council members, if you would sign in, please, and anybody in the audience, if you have an electronic device, please shut it off, silence it at this time. If you choose to come in front of the council and speak, please get a yellow form outside the door, fill it out, and get it to our city clerk, and then we'll allow you to speak in front of the council. Gentlemen, are there any changes to our agenda? Is not a call for action?
Mr. Witt.
Oh. Are you just telling me I didn't sign in?
That's why I'm talking. Thank you.
All right, so good. Can I have action on the agenda, please? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Blocker.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as stated.
I have a motion to accept the agenda. Do I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
I'm just raising.
Am I saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Until we get the program back up.
Well, we don't have any voting, so.
Well, that's true. At this time, if anybody in the audience would like to speak on anything that's on the agenda tonight, any agenda items, if you're in the audience, would like to speak to us, doing once, doing twice. All right, we're going to move on to our workshop items, which is 6A, Status Update on the LPA Meeting Concerning Recreation Type Vehicles. Ms. Teresa, if you would lead us in that.
Good evening. We had the first local planning agency meeting on Tuesday, July the 18th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chamber. Our next meeting is scheduled for August the 15th at 6:00 p.m. The meeting was attended by six citizens, the staff, and the media representatives. There was much discussion. We went through the basic overlay of the requirements and the needs, and we are looking forward to finish our discussion on August the 15th.
Okay, thank you. 6B. Oh, wait a minute, any question, discussion? 6B.
6B is your traffic impact fee waiver to, it was mentioned at the last meeting, that to schedule a workshop if necessary. Our traffic impact fee element is a complex and concerning issue, and it was requested by Councilman Hayes at the last meeting for an additional workshop to be scheduled. Ordinance 1624 shall appear for its adoption reading at your August the 14th council meeting, and that ordinance enables the continuation of the waiver of the traffic impact fees until December 31st of 2017. As discussed at the July 10th meeting, any changes in the amount of the fees must be adopted by July 31st, with an effective date of October 1st. Since the 2016 Schedule of Fees were not adopted nor part of the Ordinance 1624, the existing 2009 Schedule, whether full or in a percentage of the same, shall remain in effect upon termination of your fee waiver. There, we have a code excerpt included, Section 86-100.
And the purpose tonight is not to discuss the traffic impact fee, it's to determine if there's anybody else besides Councilman Hayes that requires another workshop, because if there isn't, then I would suggest that you get together with Councilman Hayes and brief him more in depth from the meeting that he missed. Is there anybody else that wants a workshop on the traffic impact fee? And I don't, I don't see any support here for having another workshop. So if you contact Councilman Hayes and tell him you'll work with him, because we did have a workshop on that. Okay, moving on to C.
Okay. C is, I would like to bring back the IPMC, the International Property Maintenance Code, as it relates to a code official and nuisance abatement. And I'm not sure if you can visualize our downtown area there. Your purple area right here encompasses the one mile square, which was represented by T.W. Coleman in his 1928 composite of the subdivision plats for the town of Crestview. First parts of these maps were probably 1889 and forward, but by 1928, Mr. Coleman pretty much had them laid out, and that is your original downtown area for the town of Crestview. So I would like the board to consider a pilot program where we expand our code enforcement to encompass some of the property maintenance codes into a workable format. Could I have my PowerPoint, please?
Which one? There's two for seven.
I only know of one PowerPoint.
I cannot see that, sorry. Tell me which first one or second one.
The first one is a PDF, the second is a PowerPoint. This is a summary of what was in your book that was presented to you. Your booklet was actually a PowerPoint that come from, let me see if I can mutilate his name. There we go. Are we able to get that on our screen, on this screen? Michael L. Savage is a very dignified code person. He's very knowledgeable. He is, was a licensed inspector in Maryland for over 20 years. He was a former fire marshal. He was on the Maryland's Fire Code and Development. He has been the chief, and is now currently, the Chief Building Official in Rio Rancho, New Mexico. So he has worked with the International Code Council for a while. So I'd like to first ask you the question. Why is code enforcement important? Next slide, please. Okay. And these were, these come from his particular writings that he utilizes in his location. It is to protect property from blighted deteriorating conditions by establishing a minimum standard governing the maintenance appearance condition in all residential and non-residential premises. And the property maintenance standards that are incorporated in, in the IPMC is actually that they enhance the beauty and quality of an environment, they promote conservation of natural resources, prevent the spread of disease and creation of nuisance, they provide for abatements of public nuisance, and prohibit the accumulation of litter, refuse, rubbish, other solid waste, weeds, inoperable and abandoned vehicles on property, reduce water waste within the incorporated limits of the city. Next, please. We would like to propose incorporating this first several chapters of the IPMC into a usable, workable code for the city of Crestview. We, our own code is at a disadvantage. We have a code enforcement portion of our city code, which we are updating at this time. However, you're, by utilizing only your specific code, you have no expertise or knowledge if there's a legal challenge to those type restrictions you're placing. When you adopt a model code, which is the same thing that we did in our building, an inspections department, the city has adopted the Florida Building Code, well, their unsafe structures is Chapter 108 out of the Property Maintenance Code. Next, please. What would happen would be we would instigate what they call a Department of Maintenance Inspection, but what you're really doing is creating a section or a division or an authority to appoint a code official and/or deputies if they so needed, and it allows for the creation of the specific codes they will be enforcing, and also for creating the fees and charges for services. Next, please. The code, the IPMC grants the code official the authority to enforce the recommendations of the code. And by, by adoption of the first three chapters of the IPMC would suffice as a building block for the city of Crestview. Next, please. Their general responsibility and authorities would actually to enforce the code, provide for notices and orders, inspections, identification. It'll also grant that right of entry, and also to keep your official records. Next, please. Okay. It will allow your officer to view your area either by drive-by inspections, walking inspections, complaints, citizens groups, and also occupational inspections such as we do for our business tax receipt. It will put boots on the ground. Next, please. It will also allow for notifications of violations to be in a specific way, not only would they be charged with violations if they're in conflict with any provision of the code, it would allow the code enforcement of, an accepted way in order to handle that violation. Next, please. And it's very similar to the city of Crestview's existing code, as is the nuisance abatement board that we're looking at from Panama City. You determine that there has been a violation, you determine what code it is, and what procedures you're going to follow, it, you submit that in writing with a statement of the violation, normally a correction order of some type, or citation is our verbiage in our Crestview code. We inform it to the property owner, and they would evaluate some type of penalty. Next, please. This is the system for the Property Maintenance Code, same as the city of Crestview's, which is to send a certified mailing to the property owner. Next, please. Chapter 108 is already adopted into your building and inspection. It would therefore be the same 108 that would go into your Property Maintenance Code for your code official as you're building that, those rules and regulations. Condemnation, it will allow the city to actually condemn property, unsafe structures, which would endanger life, health, safety, or property, and it might be a fire threat, or even just unsafe equipment. Next, please. Next, next. Okay, unsafe equipment. It can be boilers, elevators, heating equipment, electrical wiring, devices, or liquid flammables. Next, please. And next. Structure unfit for human occupancy could be unsafe, unlawful, in major disrepair, lack maintenance, unsanitary, vermin or rat-infested, lacks ventilation, illumination, heating facilities, or just unsanitary conditions, and the location of the structure itself is a hazard to occupants and the general public. Next, please. There is actually an unlawful for a structure to be overpopulated. You can't fit 35 people in a two-bedroom house. We've got, next, please. And next, please. Ingress, egress to the property must be in compliance with our adopted code. Your walking surfaces should be in good and safe repair, not worn, torn, loose, or compromising. Your building or all portion of it, if it has been damaged by fire, earthquake, wind, flood, neglect, abandonment, vandalism, deterioration, neglect, or is on the verge of collapse. All of these are items which your code official can have the right to process. Next, please. Okay, unsafe for use, neglected. Children could actually locate in these buildings as some sort of a hideout and play, which is extremely dangerous. They can become harbor for vagrants, criminals, and immoral people, and it's just generally an unsafe environment. Next, please. Next, please. Another way would be to, if the intended use of the dwelling has had inadequate maintenance, it's dilapidated, decayed, damaged, faulty, construction or inadequate lighting, ventilation, mechanical or plumbing system, and also your fire resistance and your electrical system. The gentleman up to our upper right's head bumped against a electrical system, a box that was not in compliance, went through his head out, if you notice the shape on his arm, that's where it come out. So leaving electricity to abandon the facilities is, is a very hazardous situation. The code enforcement official will have the right to sever the utilities from condemned buildings. Next, please. Next, please. Emergency measures. Eminent danger, which if, and if you'll go to the next slide, we'll, if there's danger of failure, collapse of the building structure, endangers life, or when part of the structure has fallen, and the occupation of the structure, which may be an actual or potential danger to the building occupants, are those in the proximity of the building because of some type of vapors, toxic fumes, gases, defective equipment, or dangerous equipment, or just the sheer danger of it falling on your head. So that pretty much, oh, one more. Pull this down to 110. The authorization for demolition. If it's so deteriorated or dilapidated, so out of repair that it is dangerous, unfit, unsanitary, or otherwise unfit for human habitation or occupancy, and there's no reasonable way to repair the structure. In general, that's the authority that we're requesting for a code official. We have, we have analyzed the city of Crestview code, the 2015 IPMC, and your nuisance abatement from Panama City. They all seem to have the same specific items. They all touch with the qualifications of an officer, the, what constitutes issuing a violation or certificate or citation, the appointment of a board in order to handle it. Some of them have a code enforcement board, some of them are simply hearing officers that will hear the complaints. So each of those qualifications among the three different entities that we're looking at are very similar, and some are really more far-reaching than what the city of Crestview would be enabled to do. The reason we're suggesting to combine it to a smaller area as a pilot program is because this is going to be overwhelming for one officer. It's, this is your oldest piece of town. If you will, your pretty colored map. Your green on that resembles structures that were constructed prior to or in the day of 1950. Your pink are structures that were constructed prior to 1967, which is 50 years ago. Those are 50-year-old areas. Your coral are your structures that have been created in the last 25 years. You have an aging area here. Some have held up very well. Some neighborhoods are proactive and are vigilant in maintaining the area. As you know, in our, sorry, we need to get this yellow quite thick enough for you. The yellow, if you're looking at this map, is your CRA development. It spans here to here, from your park here, and this is your Martin Luther King area. That is your CRA area. One advantage of having the availability of a code official at this time would be you're in process of, excuse me, another board, CRA board, is in process of passing the 27 CRA plan, which is going to include incentives for redevelopment, upgrade, and building code incentives. It may be a perfect time to work hand-in-hand with a partnership between the CRA and the city to utilize both systems to help bring some relief to the blighted and dismal areas that we have in this particular section of town. It is our oldest section, we're one mile square. It's our oldest section, it's our most historical, and it's actually the pride of our city, because our entire downtown area is situated there. The availability of having a code official is perfectly doable within the growth management's area. We are blessed with two very strong, capable enforcement officers. However, a trained official will give us the clout, will give us some, may give us a set of interests, so.
Question. There, you go first.
You know, in the past, we've had burned-out residences.
Yes, sir.
That was stayed in communities for a very long period of time. They were in foreclosure, the banks resisted us. Can this help us speed this process up? It's still, it's still very much a legal matter when it's being owned by a bank or some other entity. Will this help us?
Are you talking about for foreclosures, or are you talking about burnt-out developments?
Well, the one we had, it was a burned-out residence, but the whole place was still in foreclosure, and so we ran into all kinds of legal issues, and it was a minimum of two years or more before the city was able to go in there and demolish that building right in the middle of that neighborhood. I remember it was in the John King area, and the neighbors were pretty irate at us, but our hands were tied. What I'm trying to see, can this help us with that type of situation?
Now, under a simple foreclosure, there could be some help. However, I relate to the fire, fire chief, as long as it's under investigation, there's nobody can touch it. Am I not correct in that? Nobody can, can do that until it's under, out from under investigation. However, your foreclosures are a different item. They can be aggressively sought after. You just need the person with the tenacity to hunt them down.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Blocker.
Anytime you go in, you get to the point where you're going to demolish something, you can run into legal questions, and you, and I don't know that this code's ever been upheld by a Florida court, but it'll end up in one.
There's all, there's a, there is a section here for appeals and process. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a end-all solution, but it is a way to start, start evaluating what we have. There are processes here for, in order to take things before higher courts. That is part of your code official. They can adjust to the higher legal realm in order to have a solution there. That's one of the reasons your, some of your sterner verbiage in your abatement board may be a little too stern for what we're wanting to step into. Like I say, we're going to need to modify it to fit our needs, our level of responsibility, and our comfort level in how we're going to handle the process.
Mr. Fairloss.
Excuse me, you said this mirrors pretty much Panama City's code or?
There's, there's, in all avenues, they handle the same item, not necessarily in the same way. The, your abatement board is a very strategic board. It also means that you would need a very active board. If you think about our code enforcement board now, they haven't heard a case since 2013, and therefore, the membership that was there are...
That's, that's a little more information than I was looking for, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, my question is, do you know if theirs has been challenged in court?
To what extent, I do not know. I do know that they're, they're very astute with how they process it and they pull it in order to do their demolitions and stuff. If you choose to, to investigate this a little further, we will do a, a regular sit-down talk with them about the pros and cons, but I don't want to go that far until, until we have some idea whether or not this is in something the council even wants to pursue.
Well, I like it. Well, I like it. This is, this is what I've been after for months and months. Of course, I haven't read through the whole thing, which I do intend to do, but I have one more question. If we, uh, adopt this, are we still going to only react, um, only on complaints? Or is the, are the code officers going to be able to go out there and, by their own experience and knowledge, look at a place and say, "That's dilapidated and uninhabitable"?
Sir, you would only have one code official who would have the qualifications to go and proceed with unsafe structures. You have two code enforcement officers who are qualified and trained for your lesser offenses, which are your, um...
My question was, are we going to only act on it by complaint?
Actually, the code is, is a proactive code, means that, um, they need to be on the ground every day, searching it out.
Mr. Cox?
Yes, I like, uh, this IMPC, uh, code. I think this is, uh, what we've been looking for. We have some derelict, uh, buildings in this mile square particularly, uh, and I'm all for, uh, us, uh, being much more proactive, uh, to address this issue. Also, question back to, yes, the code enforcement, the existing code enforcement's board hasn't met for three and a half years. Would, would they still exist? And I'm going to say, uh, if, if they did, uh, they would be meeting a little more regularly.
Mr. Cox, the, um, the board would have to be restructured as we would need qualified personnel. Some of our boards are actually, um, manned by citizens without, um...
Yes.
...a lot of training. These need to actually be, and there is a typical board layout, I'm not sure if it's in your book, that will tell you, you need an engineer, you need an architect, you need a certain manpower on that board in order to thoroughly, uh, evaluate a case before them.
Well, I, I got, my suggestion would be that you have a magistrate here rather than a board, because you can get a retired judge to that, and he'll have a lot more knowledge in that folder.
Uh, as y'all know, we've been talking magistrate for your code enforcement and your Board of Adjustment for years. Special magistrate is generally the way that they're, um, running. I know the City of Destin now has a magistrate there, and it releases the responsibility of keeping a full-time board trained and ready to go.
And normally, it would be a retired judge.
Yes, sir. And that's what theirs is, is a retired judge.
Mr. Blocker, you were next.
Mr. President, yeah, well, in fact, we might be getting the card ahead of the horse here. I wanted to do some more research, and I finally finalized enough of what I have so I can back up safely, and we're in a workshop so we can talk about it.
Absolutely.
I would like to see happen, and what I would recommend to this board, the council members, and to our city, from this standpoint, and it's been a sore thing with all of us for many, many months and years, our blight areas of our city. All right. What I would like to see, and I think we could implement that through our council, et cetera, was to put in place in our city a blight assessment tax. Then through that, descriptions of what all of this done, it would eliminate 90% of what this IPMC book has got here. But if that was done, and then that assessment tax would be determined, three, four, five, six, up to 10% of the value of that property, you'd get people's attention. But that could be controlled, a loss of that could be controlled. But I, I agree with our, our counselor over there, because we're going to open up Pandora's Box. If we adopt this here without, I mean, a magnitude of review, et cetera, from these codes, I've read every page in it. I saw this, uh, book here about three years ago, but it's been improved so much. But I would like to see that, and that is a possibility, a blight assessment tax could be for the City of Crestview.
I don't know that there's any authority for that. Taxes can only be lifted if you're authorized by the legislature.
That's what I'm talking about.
You're done?
Yeah.
Mr. Cox?
Uh, yes, I concur with, uh, City Attorney on that. That's what, would, something like that would generate all kinds of legalities. I am generally for, uh, uh, this, uh, the IMPC code, there may be a little bit of tweaking, but, uh, this is what we sorely need. I, with respect to Mr. Blocker, I don't think that, uh, taxing would, uh, figure into it. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Teresa, and that's, I think we talked about the legality right to entry before. Having the official, will that sanctify that right to entry?
They do, uh, right to entry through several, several mechanisms. First, as they're granted a right to entry, uh, they also utilize search warrants. They would do a, they would apply, they are, it's within their prerogative to apply to our, um, law enforcement in securing a search warrant. And that's, if you'll, as you finish...
There's a legal avenue to do that.
There is a legal avenue in order to do it. It's not, they're not going to go out there with gangbusters and knock people's door down. They don't have the right to do that. Not even John Wayne can do that. But, um, they do have a mechanism in order to secure a legal right to entry.
Yeah, they have to go to the court to get that. I'd like for you to check and see if they had any legal challenges down here in Panama City.
With the Panama City one? The Panama City of...
They've got, they've got something similar to this at hand.
Uh, theirs is called a nuisance abatement board. They handle it within their own structure. They handle it with a board inside their city, very similar to the way Crestview does with a code enforcement board.
Ms. Cox?
One point, uh, that was Panama City Beaches...
Panama City Beach.
Panama City Beaches code, as opposed to, uh, what's in Panama City's.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay, so, Teresa, what you're looking for here is what? Looking for some kind of consensus to develop a pilot program for this one mile-square area? That's, that's what I'm hearing, right?
Right. Uh, if we chose to, to go with this, then, uh, there's arrangements we need to make, correct, before the 14th?
Yeah. We're going to figure out what we're going to do for finances and...
Yep.
If you're going to budget for a new...
If we're going to budget for a new person, we will need, need to know about that prior to the passage of, of the budget. If it's something you, you know, that, how much, how much investigation do you want me to proceed with? What, we've got a, a good understanding of it? Do we want to get into the legalities of it prior to making a decision? Do you want...
Well, you have to do that.
Well, uh, well, yeah. How, how, how far do you want me to dive now? Is what I'm asking.
Ms. Faircliff, go ahead.
I guess it's a question for, uh, council. Would putting this code enforcer, um, under the police department and have him certified as a law enforcement officer, would that give it any more teeth?
I don't know about that. It's going to be challenged anywhere you go, right?
Well, they're, they're a certified officer. Of course, they write traffic citations and notices to appear in court and so forth. If, if we have somebody doing that, but he has no authority under the law to issue notices to appear or to, uh, pay a fine or a fee or whatever, uh, that seems to me, that's where challenges will come, uh, come from.
Well, the procedure's going to be set up to say what the authority of the code enforcement office is. Questions, well, not, the court's going to approve of it, no matter who does it. If you take, if you're taking somebody's property and destroying it, there's going to be a question, right, sooner or later. And the mention of it, 50 years or whatever mentioned, that doesn't mean anything to a place that's looked after.
That's right.
I've been living in my house for four to seven years, and it's in just as good a shape as it was when I went into it. It was brand new then.
One more question.
Yeah, great. The section you have there at one square mile...
Mm-hmm.
...area, is that where this code is only going to be enforceable, or are we going to do it for the entire city?
I would suggest that you work with a pilot program first to see how it reacts. Is, before you step out and, um, uh, go throughout the entire city, I would, that's the reason we tapped into the most needed area. You could make it a smaller, you could make it simply within your CRA district. You can, you can, but keep in mind, you're going to have one person. And according to all I've read, they suggest it under the code enforcement venue.
Of course, you could get a challenge by having a certain area, somebody setting lines, you got to fill everybody else's...
There's a warehouse down the street, and he'd get rid of it.
Your only advantage of this will be in your saving grace of your incentives offered by your CRA, which is only in your CRA area of this particular section.
Yes, Mr. Blocker.
Teresa, from your opinion, which means much and nothing. Pilot program, I agree. I was going to suggest, maybe we need to start with a pilot program, period, just a CRA district. Then, what quantity of personnel would it entail to put the boots on the ground to suffice the CRA district at present?
We will need one code official in order to instigate a pilot program. At the end of that year, you may have solutions. You may only have many more needs where that you need five officers if you're going to encompass, uh, three sections of your city. Your, your city is almost 17 square miles.
Right.
So, um, it's, it's just, uh, one officer can give you a good understanding, but this will have to be a well-trained code official, not simply a code enforcement officer. Training for the both are quite different.
And we do not have that onboard at this moment.
We do not. The only one that comes even close would be Jonathan Bilby as, um, uh, the building official.
But my suggestion, recommendation, Mr. President, would be condense this down to the CRA district on the pilot program for one year. We can work out many, many things.
Actually, the CRA would be larger in this area.
True.
You said condense it down.
Your CRA is, your CRA runs from here... To here. Here. This is your one mile square.
So, it's within the...
It's within it.
Yeah.
And you would have been able to see that if the printer hadn't eaten your map, so...
You might be, if you miss some consideration check with your CRA attorney, but if they, if you limit it to CRA, you might be better going through the CRA, because if you go just a part of the city, through, through the city, they're going to say, "Well, why are you just applying it to one section and not applying it to everybody?"
The CRA can't legislate.
Yes, Ms. Cox?
I still think this, the, uh, document, that for the most part, we should move forward with citywide. I understand the concerns about the pilot on the one square mile, so move forward with, with the revised city code and, and put the primary emphasis initially on the CRA, downtown CRA district. And if you need more funds for personnel to do that, I'd be in favor of that.
Yes, Ms. Faircliff.
I suggested a, a couple, uh, meetings ago, maybe more than that, that we identify these properties and contact their owners and let them know what we're planning. We might be able to hit some of them off at the pass.
Uh, certified mailing, notification, correspondence, all of that is your first avenue. It's always your first avenue.
Ms. Blocker, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. President, well, that goes back, and I'd add too, now, let's get our mayor on the spot. He's the hecoon of this town. Now, I would like to see, and I would like to have the input from the councilman, to set up, schedule a town hall meeting. Point taken number one, our mayor. Wherever elected official, ever-appointed committee member, come before the public and let the public drill everybody. And if we're not going the way they want to, we know to change, but how are we going to know unless we get these people's input? How can we do it without having a town hall meeting with everybody that's in responsibility? You code enforcement everybody. If you've got a gripe, come and let it be known.
Mr. Cox?
Yeah, I'm not for that. We, we are elected officials. We're elected to, to do a job, and this is part of it. We've been presented a plan and a process that we sorely need. There are derelict properties and property owners that pretty much laugh at us because they've, you know, they've had derelict properties for years with nothing done about it. So, I think we need to have some teeth and move forward. We've got a new courthouse coming rapidly under construction, and, uh, we need to take care of, uh, our own house and our own business.
Any other comments, questions? Mayor, would you like to comment on what Mrs. Blocker said?
Anytime that there's a, um, that we wish to meet with the public, uh, we, we need to be available for that. But I'm wondering just how many citizens, we know how many citizens usually show up for our town hall meetings, which is not very many, when you think about the number of homeowners that we have in the city. I'm skeptical as how, how much, uh, how much opportunity we'd have to get across the message. It might, might be better to actually work through the media to get it out to a bigger number of people with, uh, radio broadcast and interviews and, um, things like, I'm not sure. I just don't know which would be best. I'm willing to meet with the public at any time that we wish to do it.
But give the public one opportunity, Mr. President. They do it or they don't. Then, don't let, as Mr. Cox said, let the legislative board move from there.
But what would you say if, if the view of the public was, "We don't want any code enforcement. We should let our buildings fall down." Are we going to vote for that?
We would no.
You know... Yes, Ms. Faircliff.
We're, we're having a lengthy discussion and a way to satisfy the, the, the ques- way to satisfy the, the question is coming, I suppose, in these RVs. People don't like it because they're living next door to a twenty-four-foot RV when on the other side of the house, a twenty-three-foot one is okay. I can't imagine what it would be like living next to a burned-out house with six-foot weeds in the yard and the fence falling over and rats and who knows what else running in and out it all the time. And we're spending a lot of effort to satisfy the RV problem. Let's, let's get on this problem and, and do something rather than batting it around.
I think we've had, we've had a lot of discussion on this and we've kind of come to a consensus. But let me just say this. Obviously, I, I agree we have to do something. But I'm not so sure that we're ready to leave and do it for the whole city. The number of people we would have to train and hire. I, I think the pilot program is a better way to go because we will go through some training lessons by doing that. Probably gonna make some minor mistakes or whatever. We can learn from those before we decide to go citywide. That's the only reason I would, I would support starting small with a pilot program and seeing how it works.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Point, but if we, pilot program, fine, but if we only did that, wouldn't we be looking at two different sets of rules? That's confusing to me. I, I think we need the city code updated and we may focus on a one-year pilot program, but, but the whole city code needs to be updated, not just for one area.
We're in the process of updating the entire code there. And depending on how we want to go, this is part of your, I think, chapter thirty-eight and, well, your chapter one oh-two. There's a lot of different areas that the code enforcement actually touch the city code. We just want a consensus of, of how do you want that portion to be rewritten? Are we gonna write it with some type of maintenance code? Or are we simply going to write it under our own CR, on our own code enforcement board? We're, that's what we're here for. We're ready to put together the remainder of your code so it can be presented. But with code enforcement, this and property maintenance, we need a direction of how the council wishes to go. Do you want to go with some type of maintenance code that will force property owners to keep their property up, to keep it in good repair, to keep it clean and free of weeds and rodents and or is that we're going to go back and redo what the coded, portion of the code is now where we deal with weeds, inoperable vehicles, abandoned refrigerators and let that be what our code enforcement officers do? So, it's, we need a direction from the council of how we're going to satisfy the code update. We're just, if we're going to update it with some type of an abatement process, some type of a nuisance violation and penalty phase, we just need that information from the board to help us get together our codes. If you require more information or more research or I haven't answered your questions, let me know and we can investigate and, and evaluate it.
Ms. Faircliff.
Why can't we just call it a nuisance properties ordinance and put in the definitions at the very front of it what a nuisance property is? One that perpetuates a illegal activity because of a lack of management or, or no one overseeing that property or whether or not it's got vermin running in and out of it and breeding all the time or whether or not it's an ugly and unsafe structure, whether or not it's an unsafe refr, appliances or automobiles or whatever on that property. Just, just fill up the page with definitions and cover it all.
It's, majority of those are actually in there except for ugly. We can't use ugly.
No, I said ugly and.
The one thing we do not have is for any type of varmint such as a raccoon or rodents or anything like that. We do not have anything like that in our code, but however...
Maybe we need to define vermin.
Gentlemen, could, could we, could we agree that we want growth management to go forward and work on the code without determining at this point if we want a pilot program, a city program? The whole code has to be reworked based on the principles we're seeing here in the IPMC. If we can agree on that, then we give her the go-ahead to work on that. Is that something we can agree on?
I can.
Yes. Mr. Blocker?
Mr. President, I would like to see that our counselor would give us suggestions, some guidelines with, through his guidelines would have all the legality to be in compliance with what we need to go forward to, then move forward. And nor do, what we're gonna do is, we got the legality, it's behind us.
Well, you're not gonna ever have it behind you. You start tearing down buildings, a lot of what your code says, you're gonna get challenged. People, people are very possessive of their property, but likely are their children.
Right.
And I would think if you're gonna adopt this international thing, which appears to be pretty, you know, pretty covered most everything, but I think you should make it the whole city. Cause it not pick out one area to bury down on.
What, what recourse would you suggest if we can't tear them down?
Well, I didn't say you couldn't tear them down, but I said you don't, probably face legal challenges and it's gonna be up to the court to determine. But this, this code has got provisions for abatement in it, so if, if you go far with this for the whole city, then if legal issues come up, it has to be addressed at the time they come.
Right.
I'm for going the whole city.
I think I'll be the whole city.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
I'm for a citywide code revision and with, with this IMPC as, as the major blueprint for it. And there's plenty of, of property owner corrective measures of steps available to minimize demolition, but we'll probably get there with a few structures, but I'm for a citywide and get it done.
Yes, Mr. Blocker.
I go back to, and I, when I said condense to the city, but now citywide, I can go citywide, but that needs to be done. Then that's gonna affect your budget request.
Yes, sir, it will.
Greatly.
I, I can't do that under what I've requested so far.
No.
I only, we only made, found one person in the budget that was requested.
What's wrong with one person?
You got now a citywide, isn't it?
Like eating an elephant. You just do it one at a time, one bite at a time.
Well, it would be extremely slow at this particular level. Now, your existing officers shall still handle the areas that they are handling, which is the lean searches and the inoperable vehicles and all the things that they can handle. The official will be specialized in handling the unsafe structures, the dilapidated buildings. That, that's going to be their main course. They're not gonna be out after some, writing up somebody that's, needs to mow their grass. So they will be specialized in what they do. But we can try it if, you know, next year if we're here asking for four officers, you'll know what we're, what we're geared with.
That will be our pilot program.
Hey, we got a big, we got a big airplane.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Also, code enforcement board, would that require a charter change or something to, to
No, sir, it's...
to change the board and the makeup and the qualifications for that board because they would be meeting.
Yeah, they need, yeah, they would be meeting. Actually, we will confirm the research. The makeup of the board is pretty generalized, so we will, as we're redoing our particular code, we will put in the specific requirements we need.
Your, that's your, your boards, excuse me, your boards are setting up ordinance, not by charter.
Excuse me.
All right.
Wrong word, wrong word.
Got the green light to go ahead with working on a new code, but make it, no pilot program involved unless the whole, unless the whole city's the pilot.
Whole city, the whole city's our pilot program. Okay, thank you.
Is that in the motion?
No, we're in a workshop. We reached a consensus.
Thank you.
Mr. President, get a projection of where this might be implemented.
I don't know. Teresa, you have any, any timeline that this might happen?
Considering we've got about half of it already written, if we're going to utilize the funds that's in my existing budget, it means that we need to pull together a fast consensus of what you expect and as soon as you can vote on what you're expecting that person to fulfill, time we get it advertised, we will be looking for commencement on our physical year startup on October first.
That might be kind of aggressive.
Well, you, we've got to get somebody in here to help facilitate the plan of how, of attack and want better person than to have someone who's qualified that's gonna have to get out there and enforce it. So, I didn't say we would be boots on the ground October first. I'm just saying we're gonna have, we're going to have the availability to finish the regulations and documentation with the input of the code official.
All right, while you're up there, why don't you give us a six-D update on outstanding items, which basically just kind of upcoming meetings, right? Sorry.
Everybody close my book, gentlemen?
Not yet.
Okay, just a reminder so that on the tail end of our, our meetings, we'll be able just to spark your memory with what's gonna be coming up. August fourteenth, budget meeting at, it's five o'clock, Ms. Betsy? Five. You also have the council meeting at six on the fourteenth, at which you will see the ordinance sixteen twenty-four, the traffic impact fee waiver, and sixteen twenty-five, your temporary moratorium on the cannabis-related activities. The waiver will run to December fir, December thirty-first and your moratorium will run out on December first. And you're gonna have a lot of out-of-city resol, utility resolutions.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Before I, before I call on the audience, anybody in the audience, do we have anybody in our department heads here today that want to share anything with us?
I have one.
Yes, Madam Clark.
I've been working on your request from the last budget workshop last Monday. Those should be out to you by the end of the week. I am going to ask that we meet again. I will send you out a calendar to go over it because it's, that way maybe our meeting will be very short on the fourteenth. If I have a chance to explain it individually about what we're looking at for those steps, but I'll send that out. But you should have your, your next set of options by Friday.
Chief, you...
I do have a comment. If code enforcement's not gonna be done by Teresa, I think you gotta give it to the fire department.
Ray, do you have anything? All right, gentlemen, you have anything else? We'll talk that right. Okay, anybody in the audience would like to address city council this evening? Yes, Madam, come on up. You've been very patiently sitting back there through a couple of meetings.
I didn't fill it out. I don't have a pen. I didn't have a pen.
Okay, just give us your name and address if you would.
G. Di Mari, I live in Crestview.
Could you move a little closer to the microphone and, and we're gonna give you three minutes and we're not obligated to respond to you.
It's not gonna take me.
You might just digest all this good information you give us, okay?
The question I have is that in order to be, to speak on the, to be put on the agenda, you have to give seven to ten days notice in order to request, to get permission to be on the agenda.
Only if you're going to present information.
Right. Well, the problem is, is that it takes you seven to ten days if you want to present something, but the agenda's not posted until Friday before the Monday meeting. So if there was something put on the agenda and say I wanted to speak against it or oppose it or whatever, would it being posted so late, that's not affording me the opportunity to readjust my schedule to attend the meeting?
No, I, I, I think it's a misunderstanding and that is, if you want to be put on the agenda, otherwise it's not an item that's already on there.
No, if you want to be put on the agenda, you have to give, you have to request seven to eight, in seven to ten days prior, okay? The problem is, is the agenda's not posted until the Friday before the Monday meeting. So let's say somebody puts something on the agenda and I wanted to come and speak, like, you know, you, public opportunity, I want to come speak.
Right.
With the agenda not coming out until Friday, it does not afford me enough time to readjust my schedule to come to a Monday meeting. So, you're requ, I'm have to put, give you seven to ten days notice in order to get on the agenda, but if I want to come to speak against what's on the agenda, I'm not afforded that opportunity because you're not posting it till Friday. So it's not giving, affording me enough time to adjust my schedule to come to a Monday meeting. So the question is, I'm asking, why is the agenda not getting posted till Friday before a Monday meeting?
It's, well, I'm gonna turn it on to Madam Clark because she has to take a lot of things. You'd be, you'd be really surprised how much work goes into getting things on the agenda. The, the only thing I would say is that you might miss that one and have to get on, get on the next one because we have, you know, one or two meetings a month. But, you know, I hear what you're saying. You know, it's not that you want to create an item for the agenda, you want to react to an item that's on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But I'll let Madam Clark tell you the process because it does take a while to create that agenda.
And it does. I mean, we post it as soon as our office receives it, we post it on the website. So that's, I, I can't post it till, till I get it, when it's finalized and when I, you know, I get it finalized, we post it almost immediately. But that's, I mean, that's all we can do is post it when we get it.
Okay, because it hasn't been being posted till Friday. The other question I have is, you asked public opportunity on agenda items. The problem is, is sometimes you, you take a motion and you get the, somebody comes and presents and you pass a motion and you approve it. Some, sometimes you want to hear what they have to say before you, you speak on it. So what happens if you approve it and then I don't get to speak until comments from the audience? It's not gonna change what you guys approved?
No, no, that's true. And that's why you have to be prepared to speak on it, whether you know how the council's gonna go or not.
So you have to be prepared to speak before the person speaks so you don't even know what they're gonna say before you speak? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying you need to be prepared to present your feelings on it regardless of what anybody else says.
Well, sometimes you need to know what the information is before you, you know, to prepare to, you know what I'm saying? That's, that's just my question. I'm just asking that question because you approve things and then somebody can say, hey, I don't agree with that, but you might have approved it already.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? All right, please, this meeting adjourned.